I believe we'll find it's 6:00 PM. So I'm gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order. This is Granberry City Council, regular meeting. It is 6:00 PM, Tuesday, January 3rd, 2023. I said 3. It's Granberry City Hall, 116 West Bridge Street, Granberry, Texas, 76048. We are now called to order. I'd like to begin with the invocation, and Ms. Diane Raspberry, Associate Pastor of Hope Community Church, will lead us. Please stand.
Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you so much for the opportunity that we have together, together. We thank you for your love and mercy that you pour out over your children each day. And Father, we thank you for a new year that we can come together and we can do better than we did the year before. Father, I thank you for a new year to love each other better, to honor each other better, and to honor you. Father, I ask that you be with us tonight, be with the men and women who have stepped forward to lead into God. Father, I ask that you be with the law enforcement that are here to be honored. And Father, I ask that in everything that we do and everything that we say, we honor you. Father, we love you, and we proclaim this night that you are our God, and we are your people, and we give all honor and praise and glory to you. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. If you're joined, council, in the Pledge of Allegiance to the United States and to Texas.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America, and to the Republic where which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Texas flag?
On honor of the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. Okay. Uh-oh. We're gonna move to proclamation and presentation, and tonight we have a very special presentation. If I could ask Chief to come forward. There you are.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council, and Deputy City Mayor. Thank you for allowing me to come before you tonight, because I'm fixing to do my favorite part of this job, and that is recognizing outstanding police officers with the Granberry Police Department. You know, police officers perform many jobs throughout the course of their day. Those type of calls can range from very minimum to very serious, but none are more important than when it comes to saving a life, a life that without their immediate intervention would be lost. And tonight, I have the honor and privilege of recognizing four of Granberry's finest with the Life Saving Award of the Granberry Police Department. So right now, I'm gonna ask for Officer Seth Wagner, Officer Chris Weston, Officer Justin Pugh, and Officer Patrick Wilson to come to the front. All right. First, we have Officer Seth Wagner and Officer Chris Weston. On May 21st, 2022, Hood County Dispatch received a 911 call from a concerned citizen about a man laying on the ground at Memorial Lane. Dispatch informed the officer that the man was described as laying on the ground, and his face was purple. Officer Wagner and Officer Weston responded. Upon their arrival, they approached the man and noticed he was gasping for breath. They immediately called for emergency medical assistance and began to evaluate the man's condition. The man then, the officers then noticed that the man had a swollen tongue and a closed airway. The officers immediately moved to the open, moved to open his airway and move him into a recovery position. Within moments after doing so, the man began to recover and received assistance from medical services. According to Texas EMS Director Ricky Reeves, the actions taken by Officer Wagner and Officer Weston prevented the man from experiencing system failure from a lack of oxygen. Director Reeves stated that the officers followed emergency medical procedures by assessing the patient and reacting to their observations by direct, which directly led to the recovery of the man. Director Reeves continued by saying that the man was hypoxic, and without life-saving intervention by Officer Weston and Officer Wagner, the man would not have lived. The Granberry Police Department would like to recognize Officer Seth Wagner and Officer Chris Weston for their quick and decisive efforts during this incident. As a result of their actions on that day, both officers have been awarded the Granberry Police Department's Life Saving Award. Officer Weston and Officer Wagner. (Applause). 911 call regarding an overdose at a residence within the city of Granberry. A 13-year-old child contacted a neighbor and stated his parents were passed out, and he thinks they had overdosed. The neighbor checked on the couple inside the residence and observed them unresponsive with white powdery substance near them. The neighbor then called 911, believing the couple had overdosed. Officer Wilson and Corporal Pugh entered the residence and observed the male laying, subject laying on the bed in a fetal position with a used syringe next to him. The female was laying on the floor just outside the bathroom and was forming at the mouth. Corporal Pugh began checking on the male subject and administered Narcan into his nose with no response. Officer Wilson began checking on the female and also administered Narcan through her nose. Based on the initial assessment, both officers believed the female subject had a higher chance of survival, so they pulled her from the bathroom and into the living room where they had more room to attempt to revive her. Corporal Pugh provided Officer Wilson with another dose of Narcan, which he administered to the female. Officers began administering chest compressions on the female because they were unable to locate a pulse. Just before Texas EMS arrived on scene, Officer Wilson and Corporal Pugh heard the female attempting to breathe, and her pulse returned. Texas EMS arrived and continued life-saving measures on both the male and the female. The female was transported to Lake Granberry Medical Center, where she recovered and was later released. The male subject was unable to be revived and was pronounced dead at the residence. Because of the quick actions of Officer Wilson and Corporal Pugh, their ability to quickly administer Narcan and effectively perform CPA, CPR, they were able to save the life of the female. The Granberry Police Department would like to recognize Officer Wilson and Corporal Pugh for their quick thinking and calm demeanor during this incident. As a result of their quick action, on this day, both officers have been awarded the Granberry Police Department's Life Saving Award.
Congratulations again, and the city of Granberry gives you a heartfelt thanks, and I'm sure the families of those involved do. I'm gonna move right along to public comments on agenda items. And the speakers have a time limit of three minutes allotted for those comments regarding agenda items that are not listed as public hearing. Public hearing comments will be recognized when the public hearing is open. Everything we have tonight, except for the consent agenda, is a public hearing. So I will be opening up the public hearing to comments from the interested parties when we reach those agenda items. So I'm gonna now move to the consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda are routine. Our previously discussed items will be approved with one motion. However, should a member of the city council wish to discuss any item, said item may be removed from the consent agenda and considered under deliberation agenda. Council, does anyone want to remove any item, since there's only one? Do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Mr. Wadley makes motion?
Second.
Mr. Vale seconds. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. That will be six ayes. We'll now move to the deliberation agenda, and we will have a discussion from staff, and then I will open up the public hearing. Consider approving the request of 4905 GRH Development LLC to preliminary plat a 36.798 acre tract of the W. Williams Survey Abstract Number 574 as lots 1 through 13, Block 1, lots 1 through 9, Block 2, and common area of the Modern Oaks Edition. The property is located on Glen Rose Highway, State Highway 144, south of Nob Hill Drive. Mr. Ross?
Thank you, Mayor.
These will all be Kira Wallwee's show tonight, all these public hearings, so if you would take it away, Kira.
Thank you. So this project we've seen before, it comes back to you. There was a final plat approved but never recorded or filed, so the procedure is to start over with preliminary plat. After that, they will go through final plat and FIA and on to construction and development. The project is exactly the same as you've seen before. It's shown here, outlined in teal. Site's located in ETJ, so there's no zoning requirements, however, we have subdivision requirements. There are 22 proposed residential lots. This drawing shows the plat. There's one street that would connect with future development to the east, although no connections would be provided to the north or connection to the south, no connections to the north or to the east. There's one lot that would have access on to the 144. That lot down towards the bottom of the drawing is the lot with access to 144. All the others would have access to the internal street. The infrastructure impacts satisfy the Development Review Committee and all ordinance requirements. There are, however, variances requested. On this slide, draw your attention to sidewalks. The proposal is not to install sidewalks at this time, and a notice affixed to the plat indicating any future change in use or further subdivision would result in reevaluation of sidewalk installation requirements. As a reminder, the subdivision ordinance treats sidewalks to the discretion of the Development Review Committee and their policies. Variants requested are supported by the city engineer, and those include not to extend an eight-inch sanitary sewer. The Hood County determined that individual OSSF is acceptable. Not to provide a point of access in every direction, which I just covered. The properties to the north and to the east are already developed, so no connections there are included. Then we have not to improve State Highway 144 to urban street standards, that is with curbs. This is a text dot jurisdiction, and the city can't change the roadway. And the final one there is not to extend an eight-inch centralized water line through and along the site's frontage, and not provide fire hydrants in the development. The Aqua CCN recommended six-inch line, and Hood County Fire Marshal agreed to three red fire hydrants as an alternative firefighting method. So there are solutions to all of these variances. These slides just show the variance application in the city engineer's memo, the application. The Planning Commission on December 12th recommended to the council approval of the variances by an unanimous vote. They also voted the same way for the preliminary plat. Staff recommendations are the same. And these are your voting options. First, you would vote on the variances. You may approve as presented, approve with conditions, or deny the request. Your voting options, secondly, for the preliminary plat, approve as presented, approve with conditions, or deny the request. Thank you.
Council, do you have questions before I open the public hearing? I'm gonna open the public hearing for deliberation item 7.1. At this point in time, is there anyone who would like to speak on this item? I see no one, so I'm gonna close the public hearing. Council, do you have other questions or any questions on this item? I think we've seen this once before, and I know P&amp;Z has seen it. Okay. I hear no questions. Do I hear a motion for the approval of 7.1? Approving the request of 4905 GRH Development LLC to preliminary plat, 836.79 acre tract of the W. Williams Survey Abstract 574 as lots 1 through 13, Block 1, lots 1 through 9, Block 2, and common area of the Modern Oaks Edition. The property is located on Glen Rose Highway, State Highway 144, south of Nob Hill Drive. Do I hear a motion?
Mayor.
Yes, Ms. Burwell.
I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
There's a motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Mr. Corrigan approves?
Variance is first.
The variance, we're approving the variance, or we're, the motion is to approve the variances first. Mr. Corrigan?
Yes.
You're good? So the motion's to approve the variances. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed say nay. I believe that is approved, 6-0. Do I hear a motion to approve, is it the plat at this point?
Yes, sir.
Do I hear a motion to approve?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the preliminary plat as presented.
As presented. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Mr. Wadley, seconds. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. That will be approved, 6-0. Okay. We're gonna run to 7.2, also a public hearing. Consider approving the request of Christian and Christian Properties LLC to replat a portion of Lot 3, Block 2, and a portion of lots 2 and 3, Block 3, of the Colston Edition as Lot 3R, Block 2 of the Colston Edition. Kira?
Sorry. This site is located on West Pearl Street and is about a half an acre in size. It is a portion of Lot 3, Block 2, and Lot 2 and 3, Block 3, of Colston Edition. The applicant desires to combine the existing two lots and to create one lot out of these lots, and to then demolish an existing structures on the site and build new building for a law office use. This just shows the zoning. It's light commercial, and the proposal does meet the zoning requirements. This shows the plat coming forward with, I misspoke, I said two lots, three lots are existing, one will be created out of those. This shows the existing utility map. All of the requirements satisfy the DRC committee review through the zoning ordinance and the subdivision ordinance. These are just some photos of the site. This slide speaks to the infrastructure and delivery of services. The only one to draw your attention to here again would be sidewalks. There are non-existing. They are required along West Pearl and South Abel Street, as well as along West Bluff. The plat includes a note stating that the sidewalks would be installed along all street frontages at the time of building permit, so with the development. Again, all DRC comments have been addressed, and actually, there is one variance, and that is not to improve West Pearl Street to urban street standards with curb and gutter. That street is text dot jurisdiction, so no changes to this roadway are proposed by text dot. This is variance application in the city engineer's memo to support the variance request application. And the Planning and Zoning Commission on December 12th recommended approval of the variances, the variance, and they also recommend approval of the replat by unanimous vote on both of those motions. Staff is recommending approval in the same manner, and these are your voting options. You would need to have a motion first on the variances, and the second would be on the replat. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Council, any questions? No. I'm gonna open the public hearing for item 7.2. Approving the request of Christian and Christian Properties LLC to replat a portion of Lot 3, Block 2, and a portion of lots 2 and 3, Block 3, of the Colston Edition. There's Lot 3R, Block 2 of the Colston Edition. And I'm not gonna be reading these all the next time. Is there anyone that would like to speak at the public hearing? I see no one, so we will close the public hearing. Staff, are there any questions? Comments? Do I hear a motion to approve the request of Christian and Christian Properties? The variances? To approve the variances as presented?
So moved.
Mr. Corrigan?
Second.
Mr. Rodriguez. Eddie.
Mr. Rodriguez, seconds. Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. I believe the ayes have it, 6-0. Now we will take a motion on voting to approve the replat.
So moved.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Second.
Mr. Corrigan, seconds. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. I believe that will pass 6-0 as well. Okay, we're gonna move to 7.3. Consider the following request of McDonough Real Estate LLC and Kevin and Mary McDonough to, one, execute a facilities improvement agreement by, FIA 23-01, by and between the city of Granberry and McDonough Real Estate Holdings LLC, the developer, for the construction of water sewer, paving, and drainage improvements. The approximate cost of construction is $160,178. The developer has selected a payment performance bond which covers 120% or $192,214 of the cost of the facilities, and, two, replat lots 1214, Block, 12 through 14, Block 3, of the Horton Edition as lots 12R, Block 3 of the Horton Edition. The property is addressed as 529 North Houston. Yes, ma'am?
Okay, so this site is shown there on your slide, outlined in teal at Ewell and Houston Streets. The site is owned Central Business District, and the purpose is to combine three lots into one lot for commercial development. The proposed specifically is for restaurant use. The slide shows that CBD zoning there in blue. This is the plat. There's a lot of language on that, but the actual site is shown on the upper left corner of that drawing. As you can see, it shows the single lot. And the utility map shows the location of proposed utilities. The plat includes fire lane as is normal. Right there, it's kind of that swoosh that goes through the site. There's a few pictures of the property. And our infrastructure and service delivery slide. This site does have a floodplain standards, and there's an easement that would be placed over the property, including for maintenance restrictions and a minimum floor elevation, which is normal in this situation. Also upgrading city infrastructure for water and wastewater, transportation dedication of right-of-way, again, the fire lane that spoke to. The electrical is Granberry Service on the west side of Houston and north side of Ewell. And sidewalks are planned to be included along Houston and Ewell. There's a portion of sidewalks, a partial variance for DRC consideration, not to install parts of the sidewalk until development occurs on at budding or adjacent properties. Request for one variance, and that is not to reconstruct Highway 51 in Ewell to conform to the city of Granberry's master plan and general design criteria. That is a variance that's supported by the city engineer, and all DRC review comments have been addressed. This is the applicant's variance. The city engineer's memo speaking to the fact that the street is under jurisdiction of the Texas Department of Transportation. The city does not have authority to change that Houston Street roadway. And Ewell is also, it's an asphalt roadway and is in good conditions. Both street would be upgraded to provide curb and gutter along the roadway to complete its cross-section. So they're supporting the variance. Planning and zoning recommended approval on December 12th of the variance, as well as the replat, both by unanimous vote. Staff recommends the same on both the variance and the replat, and these are your voting options. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Any questions, council? Okay. I'm gonna open the public hearing for, yes, Mr. Rodriguez, do you have a question?
I'll wait after you close the public hearing.
Open the public hearing on item 7.3, and it's considering the following request of McDonough Real Estate Holdings LLC, Kevin and Mary McDonough, to execute a facilities improvement agreement, FIA 23-01, by and between the city of Granberry and McDonough Real Estate Holdings LLC, developer, for the construction of water sewer, paving, and drainage improvements. The approximate cost of construction is $160,178. The developer has selected a payment and performance bond which covers 120%, $192,214 of the cost of the facilities, and, number two, replat lots 12 through 14, Block 3, of the Horton Edition as Lot 12R, Block 3 of the Horton Edition. Property is located or is addressed as 529 North Houston. So is there anyone that would like to speak at a public hearing?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I apologize. My slide should have included a voting option prior to the variance option for approval motion or denial motion approval that would be favorable for the FIA item. I apologize about that. Yeah, there should have been three. The first one would be a vote on the FIA. The FIA is facilities improvement.
23-01?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. So there's no one to speak, or no one has chosen to speak on, as a public hearing? I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing. Mr. Rodriguez, you had a question?
Yeah, Mayor, I was looking at the FIA, and I have some questions on the FIA on, and I don't know who to address this to, but as far as, when it comes to the eight-inch water line, I'm just wondering why the applicant has to provide another proposed eight-inch water line on Houston when there's already one on Ewell Street?
Mayor, Council, Rick Crowell, Assistant City Mayor. Mr. Rodriguez, the, there is an eight in Ewell. There is no water on Houston in this area. It was stubbed out a one inch many years ago to provide water to the storage of the wagon yard over there. So it's, the reason for it is in the ordinance, it's the to and through ordinance. They extended across the frontage of their property, the road frontage of the property, and when the next lot down the line develops, they will extend it to their properties. But it's the to and through in the ordinance.
I understand that, but what other property are you extending it to?
When the next lot's developed down, back south of this property.
The south of this property?
Yes.
Okay.
There's only one inch up in that area.
So there's only one inch in that area?
Yes. That's correct.
So the goal is to continue that eight inch all the way down Houston as the other properties develop?
And eventually connect it to Rucker. As that, rest of that property develops.
Okay. But they already have access to water off of Ewell?
They can.
So if, if I was the applicant and I had access to water, why would I have to put in another pipe on my property?
Because it's in the ordinance. The frontage of their property, they have to extend it to and through their property.
Subdivision ordinance, right, Rick?
Yes.
But it's also, can be waived, that the requirements can be waived?
Staff's not recommending that.
Okay.
They did request that variance, council. They could have. You're correct. But apparently, there was probably dialogue going in that that wouldn't be, might not be supported.
Correct. Right.
Okay. So that wasn't requested, or was that kind of stopped at the community development, saying that, don't even bother?
That was, that was determined in the engineering review.
Okay.
In the engineering comments. In the engineering comments.
And was the applicant even provided any type of? Explanation or options on what they can and can't do? When it comes to variances and waivers to variances?
Yes, we always explain those to the applicants.
And they actually do have the variance in front of you, that just wasn't one that would have been supported, it sounds like.
The short answer to your question is, is in the ordinance on road frontage, it has to be extended to and through the frontage of their property. And that's, that's normal procedure in just about any city, that you have to extend utilities to cover your property for the next guy that develops downstream from you.
I understand that, Rick, but extending it two feet and then, or extending it 25 feet, there's a big money difference. I mean, I can extend this two feet and tap onto it, onto the property.
Right now, it's a dead-end stubbed-out line in Ewell.
Right.
Let me interject here. We've had a planning and zoning commission go through this. We've had a public hearing, and I've not heard this except from you, which is, which is fine, except I would expect that the developers would be asking these questions. Are they asking them through you?
Well, Mayor, we represent the citizens.
I agree.
Right? And look after their well-being and everything that's on these. That's why we're up here, to question these things, Mayor. And this is the only opportunity I have is to question these. I can, I can go through the community development, but that's not my place to go and question the engineer.
All right, I understand that, and I wasn't, you know, looking for, I'm not debating that, I'm just saying, the things, this question appears to have been raised a number of times, and it is in their ordinance. And we do have a lot of work to do tonight.
In addition to an eight-inch stubbed-out line, it's not relevant for fire flow, for the fire department, in addition to that, for this business.
I understand. Thank you.
Thank you. And I do appreciate the questions, I'm sure everyone does. Any other questions? Do I hear a motion to approve FIA 23.01?
So moved.
Mr. Woodley makes the motion, second.
Second.
Mr. Corrigan makes a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. That will pass six and oh. Do I hear a motion to approve on the public hearing, item 7.3, to approve the variance as presented?
So moved.
Mr. Corrigan makes the motion.
Second.
Ms. Burwell makes a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. It passes six and oh. Do I hear a motion on 7.3 to approve the replat of the item, 7.3?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the replat as presented.
Mr. Vail makes a motion, second.
Second.
By Mr. Rodriguez. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. That will pass six and oh. Let's move to item 7.4. Consider adopting ordinance number 23-01 approving the request of Guy Slimp on behalf of Sensato to rezone a 13.756 acre tract of the John Edward, or the John Howard survey abstract number 717, and the Benjamin Green survey abstract number 197, from interim holding to planned development with a base of light commercial. This property is addressed as 5260 and 5284 US Highway 387. Yes, ma'am?
Thank you. Again, this is your site location slide. This property is outlined in teal, and on the east side is Eminem Road. The south side is 377 Highway. As stated, this request is for a zoning project. I'll go back to the slide, shows the zoning map with the site outlined in teal. The zone changes for a planned development district based in the light commercial development standards. The site has, has a good deal of presence on Highway 377, and the other option for zoning that would incorporate a truck stop is in the industrial district. So in working with staff, working with the applicant, the recommendation to go with the planned development based in the light commercial standards worked well for this location. The proposed truck stop would be a designated use in the PD, and that would be a truck stop for heavy vehicle fueling only. So the use would not come with the traditional truck stop features like showers, or truck repair, or truck washes, those kinds of activities. The request also includes a convenience store along with the PD structure. The convenience store would be a use as a allowed permitted use by right with no requirement for an SUP, a specific use permit, which would otherwise be required in the light commercial district. So that's a little bit of background on, on the use side of this proposal. And the surrounding area there to the north, I'll just go back to that map that shows you a little bit of context. There to the north of the site is some residential properties outside of the city limits in ETJ. To the south is a school type of use, and to, yeah, to the west is school type use, and to the south is some unimproved and commercial development. This is the future land use map. It represents commercial, and light commercial zoning is consistent with that commercial designation. The comprehensive plan narrative for commercial uses like gas stations are included, retail and offices. This is the site plan. There would be access on Eminem Road with two drives there, and one drive out to 377. The commercial building for the convenience store is located generally central to the site. Passenger vehicle fueling islands are towards the 377, and the semi-truck, large truck fueling is to the south of the convenience store building. And this site will, will be installing temporary onsite sanitary septic system that's outlined in a box to the, to the south of the semi-truck fueling. This shows the landscape plan that's proposed. And these are just some photographs of the site as it's existing, unimproved condition, the application. Staff mailed notices on December 1st to 13 property owners within 200 feet, and on the tax roll within 200 feet of the property. Notice was also published on November 26th in the Hood County newspaper, and we've received no responses, either in favor nor in opposition to the request. The planning and zoning commission on December 12th recommended approval by unanimous vote, and staff also recommends approval of the change in zoning. Your options for voting are to approve the request for the change of zoning or to deny the change in zoning request. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Counsel, questions?
I just had one question. Just to refresh my memory, the detention pond?
There's a detention pond towards the north of the convenience, sorry?
Yeah, I just, I saw it, it's, and the purpose of that is?
Oh, for the, to store onsite drainage water is, is normal if you need capacity.
All right. It's a big pond.
Other questions? Mr. Corrigan?
Not, not so much for, for zoning, but just maybe if there's any future conversations. Has there been any discussion about putting some sort of pylons or some safety feature on the front of their property to separate any potential traffic leaving the roadway and entering the site?
I'm not aware of any conversation about that, but that's something we can certainly bring up to the applicant in the design phase.
All right, thank you.
Other comments, questions? I'm going to open a public hearing for item 7.4. Consider adopting ordinance number 23-01 approving the request of Guy Slimp on behalf of Sensato to rezone a 13.756 acre tract of the John Howard survey abstract number 717, and the Benjamin Green survey abstract 197, from interim holding to planned development with a base of light commercial. The property is addressed 5260 and 5284 US Highway 387, or 377. Is there anyone that would like to speak at a public hearing? I see no one, so I'm going to close the public hearing. Counsel, other questions that you may have? Okay. Do I hear a motion to approve the request for the change in zoning?
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the request for change in zoning.
Motion is made. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Mr. Corrigan makes a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. I believe that passes six and oh. Moving to 7.5. Consider adopting ordinance number 23.02 approving the request of the request of Guy Slimp, I did get that. It is 23.02 approving the request of Guy Slimp on behalf of Sensato for a specific use permit to allow a convenience store with gas pumps in a light commercial zoning district. The property is located at 2001 Weatherford Highway. Yes, ma'am?
Okay. Again, here's your site location map. As stated, the, the property is there on US Highway 51 and Loop 567, outlined in teal. The site is zoned light commercial, and the applicant is proposing a specific use permit for a convenience store with gas pumps. Same applicant, except this particular proposal does not have the truck stop option. So it's just a convenience store with gas pumps. And the zoning map shows the light commercial zoning. Further to the east is the proposed subdivision Sandstone. In fact, this property is part of that platted subdivision. It still needs to go through final plating, but can be zoned for the SUP at this time. To the west is interim holding, zoned, it appears to have a single-family residence. And to the south, there's a gas station on, on the opposite corner, and an improved property immediately to the south. This is the site plan. You can see here, Loop 567 is on the right in this drawing, so you have an L-shaped access from 567 through a budding commercial for future development lot to the site where then you, you would drive to the, the proposed convenience store building, and the gas pumps would be lined up along Weatherford Highway or US 551. And an exit is there towards the north of the property onto the 551. This shows the landscape features that would be proposed, and a few photographs of the site and surrounding streets, the application. And on December 1st, staff mailed 28 public notices to property owners within 200 feet, and on the municipal tax roll within 200 feet of subject property. We also published in the Hood County News on November 26th as required by state law in the zoning ordinance. We've received no responses to those notifications, neither in opposition nor in favor of the proposal. The planning commission on December 12th recommended approval without conditions in an unanimous six-zero vote. Staff has a same recommendation. And these are your voting options. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Just same comment, being on the corner of a major thoroughfare would probably be beneficial if there was some, some safeguards there.
Okay. Other comments? Okay, item number 7.6, 7.5. I'm going to open the public hearing. Consider adopting ordinance number 23-02 approving the request of Guy Slimp on behalf of Sensato for a specific use permit to allow a convenience store with gas pumps in a light commercial zoning district. Property is located at 2001 Weatherford Highway. Anyone would like to speak at a public hearing? I see no one, so we'll close the public hearing. Counsel, any other questions or comments? Need for staff? No? Do I hear a motion to approve as presented?
Mayor.
Ms. Burwell?
Make a motion to approve the SUP as presented.
I second that.
Dr. Woodley seconds it. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Hearing a nay, it's approved, six and oh. Going to move to 7.6. Public hearing, consider adopting ordinance number 23.03 approving the request of Bull Lion Ranch Wine Shop for a specific use permit to allow for the operation of a wine tasting facility, winery, in the Central Business District, Central Business Zoning District. The property is located at 104 North Houston. Yes, ma'am?
Okay, thank you. This is your location map. The site is outlined in teal there on Houston. It's on the city square. The request is an SUP for a wine tasting facility or winery in the Central Business District. This is zoning mapped, it just shows the blue, and that represents the Central Business District. Basically, the site is, is surrounded by commercial, retail types of uses, and, and the county courthouse. This is the floor plan proposed for the use. It just shows the storage areas, the, the retail sales areas, and, and other functions of the, the property, the building. And a photograph from the outside, the applicant's application. I'm going to pause right here. So basically, this application does exactly what the title says. It allows wine tasting to occur at the site. On December 1st, staff mailed out 34 notices to property owners as required, and we also published newspaper notice. We received one letter that was in favor of the proposal, and none received in opposition to the request. The planning commission on December 12th by a unanimous vote had one condition and voted approval. That condition is shown on your screen, the SUP shall be tied to the TABC, Texas Alcohol, I'm not sure if I can say that, Texas Alcohol Beverage Commission, thank you for your patience, permit issued by the state and shall remain valid provided the applicant holds, continues, and maintains the TABC permit. And staff had the same recommendation for approval with the same condition. And these are your voting options. If you have questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Counsel, questions? I see no questions from the council. I'm going to open a public hearing on 7.6. Consider adopting ordinance number 23-03 approving the request of Bull Lion Ranch Wine Shop for a specific use permit to allow for the operation of a wine tasting facility, winery, in the Central Business District, Central Business Zoning District. The property is located at 104 North Houston. Anyone want to speak on that? See no one raising their hand. I'm going to close the public hearing. Counsel, other further questions? Staff? Do I hear a motion to approve as presented, item 7.6?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Vail.
Make a motion to approve the SUP as presented.
Motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Mr. Corrigan makes a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. I believe that passes with six and oh. We're going to 7.7. Consider adopting ordinance number 23.04 approving the request of Kelly Clark for a specific use permit to allow an amusement center commercial outdoor temporary per zoning ordinance section 4.1. The consideration in motion of the specific use permit by city council also provides for procedural compliance for outdoor events with animals on the city beach per section 1.04.002.F.2 of the City of Granbury Code of Ordinance. The property is located in the 500 block of East Pearl Street. Yes, ma'am?
Okay, so this slide shows the location map with the city beach, zoned light commercial. It's zoned light commercial. This is the annual bulls on the beach event. I think we've had it several times now, and it corresponds with the Founder's Day celebration. The zoning map. Surrounding area is retail hotel, Lake Granbury. There's some residential which the applicant, per the ordinance, is required to notify the residential of this proposal in order to not have to have a three-quarters vote. The applicant waived that and is hopeful to have the required amount of votes for approval. The site plan comes with the application. Basically, it shows the bleachers towards the convention center and then, I don't know if it's roped off, but an area for where the bulls perform and the performers perform. So that's kind of the layout. There's a photograph of the city beach. And the police department had no reported incidents from the prior year event. It's the application from Kelly Clark. On December 1st, the city staff mailed out 15 public notices to the property owners as required and also published in the Hood County Newspaper. We've received no input either in favor nor in opposition to the request. And the planning commission recommended approval with two conditions, with a 6-0 vote. First condition, the term length to be those states specified by the applicant. And the second, the event shall be done in accordance with the city's adopted event festival ordinance and approved event festival permit request. So that's normal. It's what we've done in the past years as well. Staff recommendation is the same. I've added a note on this slide explaining that three-quarters vote that I just spoke to. And these are your voting options. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Any questions, counsel? Okay. There being no questions, I'm going to open a public hearing on item 7.7. Consider adopting the ordinance 23.04 approving the request of Kelly Clark for a specific use permit to allow an amusement center commercial outdoor temporary per zoning ordinance section 4.1. The consideration in motion on the specific use permit by city council and also provides for procedural compliance for outdoor events with animals on the city beach per section 1.04.002.f.2 of the City of Granbury Code of Ordinance. The property is located in the 500 block of East Pearl Street. Did anyone want to speak on that ordinance number 7.7 or that consideration, agenda item? I see no one would like to speak, so I'm going to close the public hearing on that. Counsel, are there other questions of staff? Okay. Do I hear a motion to approve as presented?
Mayor.
Ms. Burwell?
I'll make a motion to approve the SUP as presented.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Corrigan. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. That would be approved, 6-0. Okay. We're now moving to item 7.8. Consider adopting ordinance number 23-05 approving the request of Schottenkirk Highway 377 Properties LLC for a specific use permit to amend ordinance 14-614 to allow auto sales used and auto repair major in a heavy commercial zoning district. The property is addressed as 4970 East US Highway 377. Ms. Wadley?
Sure, thank you. So this site is about 10 acres in size. It's currently improved with a automobile dealership. To the east and north of the site is an existing single-family residential subdivision. Also, to the east is another car dealership. To the west is a car dealership and to the south is unimproved property. The existing site outlined in teal on your map here has the benefit of a SUP already for their automobile activities. And they're proposing to add on to their building and also add a canopy to the southeast corner of that site. I have a drawing to show that. But whenever a SUP holder makes a change to their site plan, they have to come back to a public hearing for review. And that's the purpose of this application is for those minor renovations and for the new vehicle delivery canopy. This is your zoning map showing the existing heavy commercial zoning, the uses we spoke to. This slide on the right shows the full site plan, but I think as I prepared this, the orange outline has shifted. And that is actually closer to the street there on the side. I've been looking for my pointer all meeting, but I don't seem to find it over here. So I'm going to try to explain where this addition is for you. If you look to that side street and see the two entrance drives kind of in the middle, the addition to the building is to the left of that, those two side streets. Okay? And a blow up or an enlargement of that area of the site plan is shown on the left half of that sheet. So that's where you see a big kind of boxy black mark on your drawing. That's where the canopy extends over and the building is expanded. Does that make sense for everyone? Yeah? Okay, thank you. And so we'll go to the next slide. This is a closer-up view of that area. You can see the parking, the canopy where that big boxy thing is. That represents a display for a vehicle, a display area. And this is a photograph of the location of that expansion. Another one, the application. And on December 1st, staff mailed 46 public notices to property owners within 200 feet and on the municipal tax roll. And we also published in the newspaper, and we've received no input from anyone either in favor nor in opposition to the request. And the planning commission met on December 12th and recommended approval of the SUP by unanimous vote. Staff recommends approval, and these are your voting options. Do you have any questions for me?
No questions? I'm going to open the public hearing, 7.8. Consider adopting ordinance number 23.05 approving the request of Schottenkirk Highway 377 Properties LLC for a specific use permit to amend ordinance 14-614 to allow auto sales used and auto repair major in a heavy commercial zoning district. The property is addressed as 4970 East US Highway 377. Does anyone desire to speak? Public hearing? See no one desiring to speak, so we will close the public hearing. And counsel, no other questions? Are there questions? Okay. Do I hear a motion to approve as presented?
Mayor.
Mr. Vale?
Make a motion to approve the SUP as presented.
I'll second that.
And Mr. Wadley seconds. We have a motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. That will pass, 6-0. Go to public hearing 7.9. Consider adopting ordinance number 23.06 approving the request of Krista Carol Jones for a specific use permit to allow short-term rental residential unhoseded in a residential 7,000 zoning district. The property is addressed 901 Victoria Court. Ms. Wadley?
Okay, thank you. So again, this is your location slide. The site is there at the end of the cul-de-sac. That's outlined in teal, and that is Victoria Court. This request is for a three-bedroom, short-term rental unhoseded in a single-family residence. I mean, I'm going to stay on this slide and discuss the context of the site. The site is in a single-family residential subdivision there. And to the south is also residential. It's more of a medium-density development. And these are zoned for residential purposes, the medium density to the south and R7 on the other sides of the subject site. We've been using this context map to help you see where other short-term rental locations are. This is our typical 600-foot buffer map. There are no other short-term rentals or bed and breakfasts within 600 feet. And we've shown a larger area than we usually do just to capture the most nearby. And that one is over off of Arnold and Houston Street. It's shown there in pink. That's a short-term rental, also unhoseded. This is the site plan for the property, and it shows the house. The driveway currently has two parking spaces. Because this would have three bedrooms as a short-term rental, they would be required three parking spaces. So the applicant is proposing to expand the driveway to the west in order to gain that third parking space, which is an acceptable option. The drawing shows in green additional shrubbery to screen the headlights sweep. Plan commission recommends to also include shrubbery to the south side of the parking area to also screen the headlights, which staff feels makes sense, and we have incorporated that with our recommendation. This is the floor plan of the house. It's a two-story house, so you see on the first plan master bedroom and on the second floor, two bedrooms and an activity room. This is the evacuation plan that this applicant has submitted. And the applicant had indicated their emergency travel time is right there at the 59-minute mark based on the information submitted and that they would not have management in town, rather, that they would be that distant. We received late in the day an email that might suggest something different. I would suggest that the applicant would be speaking to that. I see a head nod. So the applicant has some additional information to that. This is a photograph of the home from the outside, from the front, and the neighborhood area. Application. And again, as with the other applications, we mailed notice on December 1st, this time to 18 property owners per the city code and noticing requirements. We also published in the Hood County News. And as of the writing of the report and in checking today, we have received no letters either in favor nor in opposition to the request. Included in your staff report are a number of conditions, and I'll go over these now with the P&amp;Z recommendation for approval with a unanimous vote, and staff has the same recommended conditions. A one-year term limit, I'm summarizing, don't want to read them word for word, subject to condition to the site plan, no more than three bedrooms. The supplemental standards as required by the zoning ordinance, also subject to all other city code requirements, permits, and other requirements. A violation of terms and conditions of the SUP may be deemed violation of zoning ordinance. SUP may become null and void and/or certificate of occupancy be revoked. And number seven, the following must be meant prior to certificate of occupancy, that is to provide hard-surfaced parking for three parking spaces. And the second one, to have that landscaping that I spoke of to the south of the parking be installed per that plan. Again, staff recommends approval with those same conditions, and these are your voting options. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Counsel, questions? I had just one comment. I went by the property this afternoon, and it is a new property. The building is a new residential. And there are two new residentials being built right next to it, or one house away. Okay? So those two people, obviously, there were no one there, so they didn't get to be asked if this would be acceptable to them.
Understood. So the notifications go out to the property owners. It's likely that if they're under construction, there may be a change of ownership in the future.
Right. And I was just looking, there's a space for a third, and I'm sure you guys have checked it out, but there is a space for a third.
Right, based on the information we have.
Because they're right at the end of the cul-de-sac. There's no other, there's no street parking basically there.
Right.
Other comments, questions? Okay. I'm going to open a public hearing on 7.9. Consider adopting ordinance number 23.06 approving the request of Krista Carol Jones for a specific use permit to allow short-term rental residential unhoseded in a residential 7,000 R7 zoning district. The property is addressed 901 Victoria Court. Anyone wish to speak? See no one offering to speak, so I'm going to close the public hearing.
So Mayor, I think I saw someone waving maybe.
I didn't know if you needed to wave.
If you would, just come and identify yourself and your address.
Hello, Mr. Mayor and City Council. My name is Krista Carol Jones, and my home address is 5607 Dyedrive Arlington, Texas. And I just wanted to add the updated information that I have acquired someone who lives in Granbury that will be the emergency contact if for any reason, just to follow up with that condition. So.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Any other questions for Carol? No?
Thank you.
That answered. Thanks. You answered unasked questions. We appreciate that. Are there anyone, if anyone else would like to speak? So I'm going to close the hearing on 7.9, and I will consider a motion to approve as presented, 7.9.
Mayor.
Mr. Vale?
Make a motion to approve the SUP as presented.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Mr. Wadley seconds. I have a motion second. All approved, all approved, say yea. Yea. Aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay. I hear no nays. So approved, 6-0. We'll go to 7.10. Consider adopting ordinance number 23.07 approving the request of the City of Granbury to amend a select sections of the City of Granbury zoning ordinance to add small implement dealerships and tractor sales. The amendments proposed are to Article 4, permitted uses Article 6, special districts Article 11, supplementary district regulations, and Article 12 definitions. Ms. Wadley?
Okay. So a little bit of background. You're familiar with the zoning ordinance, and it should remain a dynamic document, yet maintain the intent and character established by the goals of the comprehensive plan. And whenever, based on the need to modify the language in the zoning ordinance, we're presenting this as a proposal to add the use for tractor sales and implement dealership. We, recognizing the comprehensive plan, the policies, and some that stand out as an opportunity for new employment and job retention, include to accommodate commercial areas and non-residential uses that would benefit the city's vibrancy, to maintain and position the city as the county commercial hub, to consider other commercial centers that are generally 25 to 30 miles distance as our competitors. And those include Cleburne, Weatherford, Fort Worth, Stephenville. So when we have someone approach us for a new use that's not found in the zoning ordinance, we take that as a serious consideration because, and in this case especially, it could result in job retention and new jobs and a new use for the community. The current zoning ordinance does not have this use as an option. It offers an option for large implement dealerships like commercial tractors, the real big equipment, but not for small tractors and small tractor implements. When we did our research, we found that these neighboring communities do have small implement dealerships within their jurisdiction. And I only found one in the county, and that's outside north of town a little bit. Those in those other communities and only that one are what I've found. This is just the slide on the comprehensive plan and talks about commercial development and what we might see in our community. Other communities that I just mentioned with small ranches and small farms, moderate to larger residential properties, that the proposed use would be available to present themselves here. People do come in from those properties and do their shopping, so it's reasonable to think they would do some implement shopping and small tractor shopping as well. Again, the zoning ordinance doesn't include this opportunity at this time, and there's not much administrative leeway to make a decision administratively that we could offer this use. So a better position is to request that the use be included in the zoning ordinance. There has been expressed a desire to develop property offering these activities, and we have a proposal at hand for an upcoming meeting should... have a proposal at hand for an upcoming meeting, should this be approved. So the proposal includes a wide variety of small tractors and small implements, and in order to understand what those are, we propose definitions, small tractors being utility compact or subcompact tractors. When I went online and did some research on this and worked with staff, we agreed that this was how they were featured in the literature and materials that we would use as if we were shopping for these kinds of tractors, and that the implement attachments could be used for mowing, landscaping, gardening, clearing, animal man management, and variety of things that this proposed definition includes. So, but beyond that, this would also include skid steer equipment, which is basically your earth-moving equipment, and that's the closest thing that this would come to any kind of commercial operational type of equipment or implement. And we also found that our ordinance in review did not include a utility task vehicle. Those are your four-wheelers, task vehicles, whereas the ATVs are more your, I don't know, I call them fun vehicles. They're more, you take them off-road, so on your trails sometimes. So we added that to the all-train vehicle ATV definition, is what we're proposing. These are just some examples of tractor and its implements. Implements are those things that attach to a tractor, either they're pulled or they're attached underneath, and the upper-left corner is a stylized tractor, and the others, other pictures show various types of implements that could be attached, anything from a front-end loader to a mower device. So where would we propose this in the ordinance? The proposed new use, sales and rental of small tractors and small implements would be a heavy commercial with a SUP, and in industrial district as a permitted use, and comparable uses are automobile sales and repair, new and used, which have the same type of uses or limitations, allowances, the HC with a SUP in the industrial district as a permitted use, and then adding the utility terrain vehicles in the definition of the ATV, which I just spoke to. For SUP in the heavy commercial district, as a reminder, those districts are often found along our major streets and have more visibility as compared to some of the industrial locations in town. In industrial, you expect your activities to be obvious, whereas heavy commercial, we try to dress up the street frontage just a little bit. So we would require a site plan, lighting directed away from residential zoning and residential development, a minimum site size of 2.5 acres. That helps to prevent too small of a site size, and when we looked at the nearby small dealers, we found that 2.5 acres was the smallest, so we felt comfortable with using that as a threshold. A standard that would preclude dismantling of parts, storage of wrecked or junked items, storage and display only on hard, improved hard surface, not on dirt, repair and maintenance to be in an enclosed building, that minimizes your noise and your visual attractiveness is enhanced, and a maximum height of tractors and implements to be eight feet. So that roll bar, if you remember that picture, it had a kind of a roll bar, that would be the maximum height of eight feet. So it would be precluded from the HPO district. Reason that we propose that is there is some industrial and heavy commercial, very, very little, but that is located in the HPO district, and similar to other heavy commercial uses, those are precluded from the HPO. We felt that that just made some sense to protect the historic district. Parking, we propose is the same as automobile sales, it's comparable sales use. And on December 12th, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval by unanimous vote, six oh, and staff recommends approval. These are your voting options, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Questions? Mr. Rodriguez.
Mayor. Kara, can you go back just a couple slides? That one right there. So the proposed new use, is that, did you all think about repair as well? Because most of these places that you sell or rent, especially the sales, especially with UTV, ATV, they usually have some type of mechanic service that's probably there. Most dealerships have mechanic service that are attached to those. Is that something that is, that you all thought about as far as repair included in that new use?
Right. We did give that some consideration. Typically with these, the repair is not done by the sales facility, at least that's what we were finding, and therefore it wasn't a needed consideration.
So what would, what would, I guess because, I mean, you have auto sales, but you also have somewhere to take your car to get serviced. So that's why I'm just wondering if this is going to come back around to us, and we're going to have to add repair, because some of these tractors are pretty big, and they're going to need maintenance, and they're going to take these, hopefully, to the same dealership, or that's what they're wanting, that's the reason that they're selling them. So is that something that we need to add, or?
Can you go to the next slide, or the next one? There's repair and maintenance to be in an enclosed building. So how does that tie with what?
Yeah, that's a good point. Thanks for noticing that. So let me explain that just a little bit. So the way the use is explained to us for the proposed one that wants to come in, is that when they receive the new equipment on-site, there's a minor degree of assembly that they have to do. They have to put on that roll bar, they have to put on the tires, and I can see your point how this is a internal conflict, but that's what that summarized bullet point was trying to indicate, was that they would need to do that minimal assembly. I don't think that staff would be necessarily opposed, let me go to that there, necessarily opposed if this council were to consider suggesting a repair to include. I think that probably would make some sense.
And then one other question, and I'll release it. The minimum lot size, did you get the lot size of like the place out on 51, it's called Three Rivers, or whatever it is now? What was the lot size on that one?
That was about 2.5 acres.
Okay. All right. I'm just kind of curious of if that's, because I can understand bigger lot sizes for automotive because of their, the length and width of those automotives, but some of these tractors, tractors are smaller tractors for smaller lot usage and just, but I was just wondering if you all had taken that in consideration. Thank you.
Okay.
Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Vale.
Yeah, I would concur with Councilman Rodriguez. I think that, you know, if you look at automobile dealers, or look at just Granbury Power Sports, I mean, a core portion of their business is not just sales, it's service and parts. And I, you know, worked for motorcycle dealership for a bunch of years growing up, and, you know, sales and service kind of go hand in hand. So I think that would be something that either I would include in here or somehow allow a pathway if somebody, a cabooted dealer, or whoever it was, a John Deere dealer, wanted to come in and do that kind of light, you know, equipment, and they wanted to put a service department tied with it, I think we should have some mechanism to accommodate that in this, in this ordinance as we put it together. That's just my, my opinion.
So what, if I'm looking at this, and I'm the customer, I would think that I, because it's been approved, that repair and maintenance is allowed, I just have to do it in an enclosed building? Is that, I mean, is that not the case?
Right. I would agree with you that there's an internal conflict in the way this was crafted, and it would be to add to the use table, a small tractor and small implement, sales, service, and repair, just adding the word repair would be fine.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Wiley.
Yeah, Kara, I was thinking on the eight-foot height, if you had a tractor that has a roll bar that potentially is eight feet high, I would think the front-end loader would be several feet higher than that. And in your thing, it says including the implements, that wouldn't preclude you putting a front-end loader on that would maybe?
Well, I think what it would preclude is the front-end loader being displayed in a raised fashion.
Oh, displayed.
Yeah, so if it was on the ground, that could happen.
Not a problem.
So do you have a recommendation for a motion that would include the verbiage that you had? And does it need to go back to P&amp;Z, or?
No. So, right, so you would make a motion to approve with the addition of repair to the uses on each line of the use table contained in the ordinance.
With the understanding that those repairs would have to happen indoors?
Correct.
In an enclosed building.
Enclosed.
With the exception, now, I want to make sure that everybody understands, in the industrial district, it's allowed by right, it's a permitted use, so those supplemental standards would not apply in the industrial district. Those only apply in the heavy commercial district with the SUP. Right?
Okay. Do I hear a motion with the, what's this? Close the public hearing? Open the public hearing? Okay. And open the public hearing on 7.2, or 7.10. Consider adopting ordinance number 2307, approving the request of the City of Granbury to amend a select sections of the City of Granbury zoning ordinance to add small implement dealerships and tractor sales. Amendments proposed are to Article 4, permitted uses Article 6, special districts Article 11, supplementary district regulations, and Article 12 definitions. Does anyone want to speak on that? I see no one, so we will close the public hearing. Are there other comments, questions, before we go to a motion? Do I hear a motion to approve as presented and as amended by staff? Mr. Rodriguez?
Mayor, I make the motion that we approve with the additional comments of adding repair to the, what was it, Kara?
Use table.
The use table? Is that the only table that we need to do it for?
That's the only table that needs to be changed.
Okay. Then that's my motion.
I hear a section. Mr. Wiley seconds the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. I believe that is approved, six and oh. Go to 7.11. Public hearing also. Consider adopting ordinance number 23-08, approving the request of the City of Granbury to amend select sections of the City of Granbury zoning ordinance related to solar panel regulations. Amendments proposed are to section 2.1.1F, special exceptions in Article 11, supplementary district regulations. Ms. Wiley?
Thank you. So this is a proposed zoning ordinance. Again, this slide just reviews the fact that the zoning ordinance can be a dynamic document. It lives and breathes with, you know, with society and changes to state legislation, which this proposal is related. In 2019, the state law amended prevents the governance by the local community of solar installations. Our ordinance was not updated in response to consideration that legislation could be brought forward that would otherwise change, causing a repeated effort to amend the zoning ordinance. Well, we've had several of these solar installations come in, and a couple that got missed, in that we understood our zoning ordinance where we should have understood that those provisions could not be applied. So this will ease the implementation of zoning ordinance and prevent those administrative missteps by amending the zoning ordinance to remove the solar panels language and refer to the state statutes that the municipality may not prohibit installs of solar devices. There are some exceptions in the state law, and we would refer to the state law for those exceptions, as well as the HOA rules and regulations that might be applicable. Planning and zoning commission recommended approval on December 12th with an unanimous vote. Staff also recommends approval, and these are your voting options. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Counsel, have any questions?
Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Rodriguez.
Kara, I was like looking up the state law, and the problem I have is, when you tell somebody to go to the state law, I mean, that's just a general term. I think what would be helpful is if they were given, referred to state law so-and-so. That way they have a understanding of what we're abiding by, and what they need to look at in order to abide by the state law according to solar panels. So I would just make, I would just want that state law included, if it's possible, somehow annotated, I guess, so that they can reference what they need to go by. And I don't know if that's something that we can do or not.
I would ask our legal counsel.
So the answer to that is you could. The problem that you have with that is that the law is constantly changing, and what might be section 292.101, I think is a section 229101, today may not be tomorrow. And an example of this is just a few years ago, back in 2015, 16, I guess there wasn't enough to do in the legislature, so they took the Texas Probate Code and rewrote it, and now it's called the Texas Estates Code, and none of the sections are the same. And so if we tell somebody today, go look to the specific section, and the legislature does something else in a few years, then they come to our ordinance, and they go, and they go to look at that section, and they say, this doesn't have anything to do with solar. That's really the only issue of citing the specific statutory provision that would rule this.
But I would add, as a matter of practice, we would, if someone came in regarding solar panels, we would give them the latest state code and say, here's what, here it is.
Yeah, I just want sometime, but it doesn't even have to be here. It could be just an internal document when they apply for the solar permit, that it just gives them, this is, this is information on the solar panel, this is what our guidelines on, this is something that, this is where we are guiding, so that way you understand this, the same thing. Because I didn't know this, I couldn't even find this state code that they were referring to on this document, especially this agenda item. There's so many state codes, you got property codes, local codes, government codes that pertain, you got state, federal, and then local, that pertain to solar panels. And then you got House bills, Senate bills, that pertain to these. And it just gets so convoluted and so, I mean, you can get really frustrated trying to look at what are the requirements that the City of Granbury wants me to go by, and I think it just needs to be annotated so they can have an understanding.
Can I say something, Mayor?
Sure.
Along those same lines, I think we can accomplish that, simply adding, adding some language to our development standards that, which are more policy and staff-generated, where we can put the latest, put a paragraph in there about solar panels in Granbury in our development code, that we can change on the fly and keep, keep updated, versus putting it in an ordinance and having it codified.
As part of our strategic plan, we had planned on having a review of our entire processing.
Yes, sir. The development.
And that would be, I would suggest that would be included in that review?
Yeah, that would be an easy addition to our development guide that we have. We could create that.
Yeah, a couple of things come to mind. It could be included in the development guide, it could be included somewhere on our development web pages as an informational link.
For sure. Good idea.
Other comments, questions?
Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Corrigan.
Just a pointed clarification. So, it's my understanding that, you know, currently we require solar panels to be installed on a certain side of the house to, for aesthetic purposes, and that is going away. That's the biggest difference, is my understanding.
Correct.
Okay. That, that we currently have requirements on what side of the house that the panels are installed for aesthetic purposes, and that is going away, so they can put them pretty much anywhere.
Okay. For the record, the voice from the audience was Ms. Fay Landem, lives at Avalon Court. Any other questions? I'm about to open the public hearing. Would you like to speak for on seven point one one, consider adopting the ordinance on the solar panels?
Well, I hate that they're allowed to put these.
Would you enter, would you, yeah, there you go. Introduce yourself.
Fay Landem, I hate that they're allowed to put these in the front of their houses. I know we've had some cases on ZBA where we said that that was not allowed, and the people already had their solar panels up. But I was in Dallas like last week, and I was in some areas of million-dollar houses that had these horrible solar panels in the front of their house. And if I had a million-dollar house, and somebody next door to me put a solar panel in the front of their house, I would really be pissed off. I mean, I just think they're so ugly, and I hate that we're having to change our laws to fit that, because they're not attractive. My opinion.
Yeah. We have on the, on the table out there Senator Birdwell's address, Birdwell, we have, and State Representative Lawson, and I think that those are the kinds of things that they should hear about, because that's where this, it's where this is the origin of this. It, you know, we're, we're in violent agreement with you for the most part.
It's just, just another example of the continued erosion of local control for cities, state preempting cities and counties all over Texas, and just taking that individual control away that you're referring to, and our ability to, to take them case by case.
Do I have anyone else that'd like to speak to the public hearing on seven point one one? If not, I'm going to close the public hearing. Do I have other comments, questions? No, I'm sure there are other comments, but... Do I hear a vote to approve as presented?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Corrigan?
Second.
Second by Mr. Vale. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Seven point one is, seven point one one is approved, six and oh. Seven point one two, consider adopting ordinance number twenty-three dash oh nine, approving the request of the City of Granbury to move, to amend select sections of the City of Granbury zoning ordinance related to tree preservation conservation. Amendments proposed are to section Article Eight, landscape requirements, and Article Thirteen, tree preservation requirements. Ms. Wilding?
Thank you. Again, this is just our standard information about the zoning ordinance, that it should be a dynamic document that responds to community needs, the current times, and maintains the goals and objectives of the comprehensive plan. This comes to us based on a, a proposal to modify the existing language. Staff is bringing this forward regarding tree preservation. This proposal would make tree preservation a voluntary option and keep the language as modified in the ordinance, except on a voluntary basis. So, in the comprehensive plan, there are policies that speak to urban tree canopy in the environmental and natural resources section. It encourages the preservation and maintenance of landscape and tree ordinances, and that priority is an ongoing, and the partners are listed, the city council, planning and zoning, as well as community development. In the neighborhoods and strategies and redevelopment section, it encourages the preservation of roadway tree canopy and incentive to place trees along parkways, that there should be an incentive to, to implementing trees along, along streets. In the historic preservation and downtown revitalization, it recognizes the two designated historic trees. There are many trees in the community that are older, and we have two historically designated trees. And also in the downtown strategies, it recommends to, as a policy, to have street parkway trees, so those are street, trees that line the streets. And we've had, it's the tree preservation in the zoning ordinance since 2001. It was amended in 2019 in two ways. First, it reduced the size of replacement trees from three inches to two inches in caliper and maintained a height of seven feet. And let me provide a little bit of background on, on both of these. On a upcoming slide, it goes over the process of how a tree preservation plan is put together and what's required of it. Basically, you're doing a, the developer is doing a, an inventory of all trees existing on the site prior to development, and part of the calculations allow replacement trees, which figure into those calculations of the sizes. So, it reduced the size of the replacement tree required from three inches to two inches in caliper. It also adjusted in 2019 the diameter measurement point from 12 feet above the ground, and that's the trunk that the diameter is measured on a tree. It raised that distance from the ground to 4.5 feet, which is a recognized standard in the industry of arborist and, and tree preservation for measuring a tree size. Some background on, on how the city fits into trees. We, we are a certified scenic city. We've been that way first in 2010, and we've maintained it to date. We look forward to applying for that certification again. We received an email recently as, as a result of that certification, offering trees to the city. Now, those are saplings, they're not big trees, but, you know, they can go towards tree planting, and, and that's part of the program, is, one of the criteria is having a trees preservation ordinance. The way that this proposal is crafted would maintain having a tree preservation ordinance in our zoning ordinance. This is the slide I was speaking to. The existing tree preservation is applicable to all properties being developed that are one acre or more in size. They have to provide a tree preservation per the ordinance before development. There are some exemptions to that. If a property is agriculture, they're not required. A damaged or diseased tree is not required to be preserved, and the, the property owner or developer has to provide documentation to city staff that the tree is truly damaged or diseased and can't be saved. If there's public safety reasons, for example, a tree that was planted errantly in a clear sight zone, you know, at a turning corner, intersection of streets, or for reasons of utilities, and as well as homeowners. Tree survey, as I mentioned, you go out to the site, you inventory the inches of the caliper of trees on the site, you propose a landscape plan and deduct the inches of the proposed replacement trees, and that equals the total removed inches that is calculated to the tree fee, which is $125 per caliper inch. And that's paid into the tree fund, which serves to provide monies for various, I call them, tree improvements in the city. And the balance is carried over year to year. The current balance, at the town plan commission, I didn't update this for, for today, but I don't believe we received any payments into it in the last couple of weeks, but it stood at $104,363. And again, the purpose of those, it's been used for, for park trees, parks, trees, trees in parks, parking lot landscaping for public parking lots, downtown square, trees were funded with this type of money, airport trees and irrigation, the police department building trees were, were funded from this, and also for tree trimming and maintenance, so those are the places that that money has been used at for. And why change? You know, a lot of people hold trees dear to the heart, and others, others not so much. But there's been comments to the, the staff from developers and community calling for easing tree preservation. Some of the concerns expressed are the cost is too much, it adds to the project details and effort. Trees don't always survive, that's true. Trees don't always survive, and if they don't survive, then, you know, they should be replaced, and, and your site needs to be maintained per the landscape plan that was approved. Site design does not accommodate preservation. Sometimes site design can't accommodate tree preservation because of the infrastructure and just all the elements that, that is required of development, underground lines, over, above-ground lines, parking lots, hard surfacing, and buildings. As we become more and more urbanized areas, it's much more challenging to accommodate tree preservation. And alignment of site design and infrastructure, which I just went over. This is an example of a deer tree that, that I've been following through the years. This is a pecan tree. In 2007, it was, it was in a state of urbanization, the, the development was starting to encroach onto it, but it was a very healthy, vibrant tree. And by 2016, the nearby street had been widened, there was a new building built close by, and this is in the fall, so you can really see the form of the tree, the shape of it there, fall, winter probably. But it, it, it wasn't surviving so well with all that urban encroachment. And then by 2022, there's parking lot, a sidewalk, more driveways, and, and less room for its roots, and, and so on, and you can kind of see how the, the tree's been limbed up, and, and over time, it's just continuing to, to suffer from the, the impacts of development near its roots and the impacts that it's had. And the nearby new trees that you can see in the background, they're thriving, and they'll come along one day, they'll be, be large, nice-looking trees. This proposal retains the ordinance as a voluntary ordinance as stated. It would maintain a funding method on the basis of the voluntary ordinance being used, and it retains an educational opportunity. That's one of the, the objectives of the existing ordinance, and continues also the potential for a certified scenic city by maintaining that ordinance on our books. Plan commission on December 12th recommended approval by unanimous vote, and staff recommends approval of our proposal. These are your voting options. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Questions from the council? Steph?
Mayor.
Mr. Vale.
I just had a question for Michael. I mean, do we, do we market Granbury, you know, and during our, all of our marketing campaign, as Granbury is a scenic city, is that, do we?
Yes, we do.
Okay. So, that would be something that we would really want to try to retain even with this change, correct?
If that was council's policy decision.
Okay. Well, I, I think, you know, the idea was that there, there's a potential to maintain that. I guess I was just thinking, if it's, if it's kind of incorporated in our marketing strategy, then I think, you know, we want to try to do what we can, even change in this, to try to maintain that, so we don't lose that as a tool, and, you know, Tammy's marketing arsenal for, for Visit Granbury and, and, you know, her, her, her program, so, that's all. Thank you.
Other comments? Mr. Wilding?
I was a little, I guess, surprised that this is the way this was presented. Originally, I thought this all came about because I don't think anybody had an issue with new construction, you know, a piece of, piece of dirt, and you're, you're planting a parking lot, and you're, you know, we've got a landscape ordinance, and you can put the trees in, and, you know, the numbers are right. But then somebody comes along, and they want to revive an existing building, or there was a church that was doing an addition, and their addition triggered the tree ordinance. And, and I was under the impression that they were going to possibly be required to plant a lot of trees, potentially even tearing up their parking lot and having to put in tree islands and, and irrigation and such, and that made no sense. I mean, you have an existing parking lot, you shouldn't be required to go in and tear it up just because you want to add on to your building. And so, to make the whole thing voluntary, I, I don't know, I got, I have hesitation about that, because again, if it's new construction, and I don't know, that might be a legal question too, if, if you can, if you can say, you know, these people have to do this, and then these people don't. But again, the, based on where I, you know, conversations that have been had in the past, I was surprised kind of that this was the, the direction that it went. So, Jeremy, do you have something to add to that?
Sure. Little, little bit bigger picture, going back to something Michael mentioned earlier, is the, the usurpation of, of local authority, right? A lot of people don't know this, but the governor himself had an issue with a tree, in a tree ordinance with his HOA, and he wanted a bill that said, no more tree preservation ordinances. And they brought him a bill, and he didn't like it, he sent it back, and he got it two weeks later and signed it into law the last session. And basically, what it did is, it took away more local authority. If you didn't have a tree preservation ordinance, you cannot make one. If you have one, it's vested, right? So, we look at this and say, we, we need to find a, a balance, because we have developers screaming about the cost, threats of lawsuits, even economic development loss, because they come here and say, your tree ordinance is going to cost me this, I can go to this other town, and it doesn't, they don't have a tree ordinance, so I can go over there. So, we wanted to find a balance. So, the balance came to, it's, it's voluntary, right? And that, that's on its face, you think, well, why do we even have it? Who's going to volunteer to do that? So, the church adding on, they're going to say, we opt out, no problem. The person who is developing a rundown piece of property somewhere that might trigger the tree ordinance, rehabbing a house or something, they're going to opt out. But who's going to be in this? People who truly want to be green, people who are going to spend a bunch of money that they're going to put in a development, they're going to want to plant trees and, and, and follow the landscape ordinances as well. And we still have the ability to use this, just like, think about this, a few years ago, the legislature came in and said, you can no longer tell people what kind of facade to put on their home. You can't tell them 80% stone, right? Has it really affected us? Not really, because everybody that comes in, they want a development agreement, they want, they want some kind of help, they want a, a PD. And we can come back and say, yep, you want this, and this, and this, here's our tree ordinance, we're going to make that part of the deal. So, we don't completely lose it. It's still there, but sure, a developer could come in and say, I don't want anything from you, I'm going to put in X amount of houses, and I'm not putting trees in. It, it could happen, but if, then, then there are other things. You go back and look at the, the original CNRs, maybe in some of these HOAs. I was just talking, I think it was to Steve earlier, in their covenants and restrictions, the, the HOAs require so many trees in your yard and things like that. So, we, we don't completely lose it, but we had to find a balance to protect, I guess, like, like the church. There was another home a couple of months ago that came up, and they were doing something minor, but it, it, it caused the tree ordinance to become effective, and they were going to have to plant a tree, because a tree that had been planted 20 years ago was dead. So, voluntary for them, right? They say, I don't, I don't want to do that. But we still have it as an effective tool. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
So, Kira, what does a credit look like?
So, credits, it's, each site is, is unique to itself, and the, the credits are based on the, the number of trees that are, are put back versus the number, oh, it's not the number, the, the inches of caliper of trees that are removed, and the, the inches of caliper of trees that are placed into the site. So, if, if the ordinance requires one tree every 50 feet of street frontage, right, then you're going to be planting one tree of every 50 feet. Let's say you have 100 feet of street frontage, that's two trees. So, that's going to be six caliper inches, based on bad math, but as an example. And then what you do, you take your inventory of trees that are existing on the site that you're demolishing out, which could be any. There, there may be zero trees on site, there may be 100 trees, but you calculate up the number of inches on site, and you minus the, the number of replacement trees, and, and that's how you come up with the caliper inches that would be calculated towards that $125 per inch.
I get it. I, I think I get it.
I, I think I get it. But if, if they don't do it, let's say, you know, based on the frontage, I can only put one tree in the front of that instead of two. And if they don't do two, then they're not biding by the tree ordinance. Am I correct? Or the?
Okay. So, so there, there's two different ordinances involved. One is the landscape ordinance, which prescribes the number and size of trees that need to be planted on a, a property that's being developed. And then there's the, the tree preservation ordinance.
Right.
That has the requirements for calculating of the trees that are on site, and how those need to be inventoried to come up with what's.
I'm just trying to figure out some situations where you have an existing structure, and you have, let's just say, 20 trees, and five of them are dead, and you're like, "They're dead. I don't, I don't want to replace those. They're dead."
Right. So, you wouldn't have to. Dead trees are not counted.
Okay.
It's only the, the living ones that are healthy.
I, I guess I just need to understand this a little bit more in order to make a, a good decision on whether to make it voluntary, because ultimately, i- if it doesn't meet the, the customer or the applicant's need, they're going to say, "Well, I'm done. I don't want to, I don't, I don't want to receive credit for voluntary. I just don't want to participate in this. I, I don't want to do the tree preservation." And they have that right, am I correct? So, I, I think you may see less tree preservation than more preservations of the trees. That's the way I feel. I don't, I don't know if that's going to.
Mr. Wadley?
Under the current ordinance, like if we don't change it, if the tree thing is a, a really big hindrance to a developer, they could come and seek a variance from just that ordinance, is that correct? I mean, that's something that council could do, on, on a case-by-case basis, I guess.
I, I believe that's been done in the past in 2017 or '18.
And again, I'm thinking of another property where the, the, it was a refurbished building, it was very close to the road. There was land behind the building, based on the size of the land, he was going to have to put in a lot of trees. And I made a comment, "Where, where are you going to put the trees?" And, and at the time, the community development said, "Well, maybe behind the property, or down the property lines." And, and I was like, "Why? You can't see them. They're, they're hidden from the road. What's the point? It's a big field back there, and yes, you could plant trees, but it, it was like $40,000 or $50,000 worth of trees." And, and again, the point, my point was, "Why?" And so, again, it was, it was an existing site. There was no plate, way to put trees between the building and the road, because there just wasn't room, you know, when they did their parking lot improvements. And, and to me, that was what this was supposed to be about, was to help alleviate situations like that. But, you know, I think if you have, somebody buys a piece of heavily wooded land, and it's $125 per caliper inch, they're just going to say, "We're not doing it." You know, I mean, it's going to, it would cost them a, a lot to, to abide by the tree ordinance if it's voluntary. I, I don't see them wanting to do that. And I agree with what Eddie just said. I think if, if, to adopt something that makes it purely voluntary, and, and I understand what council said, that, you know, we still have something there, but I think we lose the teeth, like completely. Anyway, I, I, like I said in my comments earlier, I, I saw a need for a revision to the tree ordinance, because of the hardship it placed on people trying to retrofit. They're, they're modifying a building, and it triggers the tree ordinance, and all of a sudden, something, they, they, what they were doing to their property had nothing to do with trees, but it threw this in. But that's completely different than when you take a piece of raw land and you're developing it. You know, we, we want to maintain the aesthetics of this place. I, I don't know. I, I don't know where else to go with my conversation on that.
Other comments? Mr. Ross?
Just a clarification, Kira. This does affect the landscape ordinance as well as the tree preservation, or no?
So, on the landscape ordinance, there are some minor edits that need to be made as a result of this, the, the tree preservation change. But it maintains the, the planting requirements for regular landscaping. If you come in to develop, you still have the, as an example, the, the one for 50 feet along streets.
And I guess one recent example of kind of a highly dense area might have been the track behind Kroger that became self-storage.
So, the, the Kroger was very heavily treed, is what I understand. I wasn't around for that, but, but people advised me of that. And the self-storage, I believe, was also heavily wooded.
Yeah. And I know they kind of choked on that in, at the beginning, but it ended up complying, doing the, doing the survey, doing the mitigation on raw land, like you're referring to. And I don't know if council could, if they decided to have, have, have it apply to new development versus existing, if you can have that separation legally.
You're going to get into an equal protection issue that you don't want to go into.
And it would be ZBA, I think, not council, that would have to consider a, a variance, which, so it, it wouldn't come to council, it would be a zoning variance that would go before zoning board of adjustment, and you have to prove hardship at that point, and it can't be monetary hardship typically. And so, that's a, it becomes very burdensome in that regard for an existing business to go try to do that as well.
Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Vale?
Yeah, just, I mean, the only thought on that, too, then, you know, that, that becomes, you know, that becomes another hoop or two for the developer to jump through. And then that becomes another, you know, challenge for, you know, for the staff and the boards to go through all of those discussions and hearings. And I think, you know, one of the things, I mean, we want to do this right, obviously, but one of the things we want to try to do is expedite the process for our developers and help them get to a, you know, a situation where they're actually moving this project through, rather than us holding it up. So, it doesn't sound like we can differentiate between who this applies to and who it doesn't, right? So, it's equal protection. So, it's just a matter of, you know, if we created a volunteer program, do we think we have enough, you know, enough in the conversations and discussions, and I hate to use the word negotiation, but some of that happens in there, that, you know, this could be a, you know, a give and get on different things, till we, we try to end up in the same place, which is, we want to develop whatever it is, and we want it to be aesthetically pleasing to the environment, to the community. And I think, you know, you would hope, for the most part, that the people coming in to do those developments are willing to work with the city, make sure that when their project's completed, that the, the community, you know, appreciates it and likes it, and wants to, wants to be part of whatever it is. And if it's just a slab of concrete with a building on it, that's not going to achieve, I think, their, their desired result. So, anyway, those are my comments.
We currently have issues. We talked about the church, we talked about other businesses. We go down this road and say, "Okay, we'll make it voluntary." How do we get, you know, six months down the road, and we say, "That didn't, that doesn't feel good at all?" Council? Council? Council?
Lord.
Yeah. Where would we be?
Well, I, you know, six months down the road, what are we going to get out of Austin? I mean, this is, I'm not, I mean, they just started this session, they're getting ready to go. I mean, this may be a mood issue by that point.
But you said at this point, we're grandfathered in.
We're vested, yes. We have a tree ordinance, and, and we're vested.
And if we choose tonight to make it voluntary, I'm assuming we can't go back, because we, we're no longer vested. We, we gave that up.
Yeah, it would remain man, uh, voluntary, not mandatory.
Okay.
Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Rodriguez?
Kira, can you explain the, the last two voting options, what that means? To continue the item to the next public hearing, and what does that mean if we deny the request? I, I don't want to approve it, I don't want to deny it. I think it just needs to go back to staff and possibly give us some more options, look into this, and see what else y'all can come up with. I don't know if that's an option. But tell me what our voting options are. Can we send it back to staff?
So, number three, continue to the next public hearing if more information is needed, right? That's your first part of your question? Is what, I'm sorry, Michael?
Yes, just to tag on to that, if you wanted more information, or different information, or, I don't know, does that mean it comes back automatically at the next meeting?
No.
It can be postponed definitely to some certain meeting, or it can be postponed indefinitely under your rules.
Yeah, we need to postpone it definitely. Indefinitely, you could. Yeah. Yeah, it effectively dies. Are we, are, aren't we currently under some time pressures for some construction? And again, I'm thinking at the church, about, we need to make a decision.
I believe that one was addressed, correct? So, that, that, that.
Yeah, that's.
A similar situation would need to be addressed, but that specific situation was addressed.
Okay.
Sorry? They didn't have to tear the parking lot up.
That is correct.
Mayor?
Yes?
So, I mean, I don't know what other information, if we send it back to staff, you're going to come back with it, it's probably going to look the same but different. So, I don't think it's, I don't think there are any other options that I can think of off the top of my head. If, it, if, if we, if we made a decision, you know, not to go voluntary and just kind of maintain what we're doing, and that's good clarification from Jeremy, that, you know, once we go voluntary, and we can't go back as, because we're grandfathered right now. But if we had a, if we had a, someone come to the city and wanted to develop something to, to Councilman Wadley's point, could still come to, to P&amp;Z, still come to city council and request a variance, we could still approve that variance while maintaining the current ordinance. Is, is that correct? Or, or, okay, I hear it'd have to go through ZBA first?
Right. It would have to go through ZBA for the variance.
And then, and then where's, where's, where's the process from ZBA? What, what does that path look like?
It, it stops at ZBA. It could be appealed to through the court system, but it wouldn't come through city council.
Okay. So, if ZBA denied the variance, it could go to district court, is that correct?
Right.
Could we, you think we should go into executive session, have a little follow-up conversation?
I take that as a no.
I can't think of any provision of the local government code that would apply. It's not economic development, it's not real property, there's no civil litigation. I can't think of anything we could do.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
So, we get paid the big bucks, right?
Mayor?
Yes?
On the other side of this, just to, I guess, to Eddie and Bruce's point, we revised this in 2019, if I recall, because we had plenty of developers coming and saying, "This is excruciatingly expensive to do this." The biggest problem that, that we came across, as I recall, is we required folks to plant all of these trees, and we regularly have drought season in Granbury, so they plant thousands of dollars' worth of trees, and then they promptly die because they have water restrictions. So, that seemed unfair at the time. There are just a lot of variables, and, and I tend to have a little more faith in our next generation, because everything is, you know, they're, they're gearing up to be environmentally friendly. And, and I'll give Kroger, back to Kroger as an example, also, if I recall, they actually did more than we requested when they redid that entire strip, because they wanted it to be aesthetically pleasing. Am I correct in that? I think.
The redevelopment of?
Yes, correct. The redevelopment of the old Kroger.
You are correct.
So, and not knowing what's coming down the pike with the state, and I understand we lose our teeth, I think, as Bruce put it, to not have that requirement in place. We may lose that in the future anyway. But it seems to be a huge financial burden to those who, maybe they want to have a smaller development, and, and it's just not aesthetically necessary to have trees of that nature. But again, if we were a tree city, it's a pretty city, and I think folks coming in here naturally want their developments to look appealing and in line with what's in Granbury now, for a reason. That's why they come here, because we're an aesthetically pleasing city. So, like I said, I think I have a little more faith in, in the future generations to keep that environmentally friendly mentality, I guess, just because if you want your business to be successful, what are you going to do? You're going to make it look as pretty as humanly possible, which I think, over the years, our developers have done, even, you know, they've, they've done due diligence on our requirements, and then have had to pay for it when their landscaping or trees have died and have had to replace them. It just seems extreme, I guess. So, sometimes people volunteer to do things that they wouldn't do if it was a requirement, if that makes sense. I don't know. I, I don't know, if we bring this back again, I agree with Mr. Vale, I don't, I don't know that there's any more information that's going to help us make this decision, other than what has already been presented. I'd like to think there would be, but, I mean, you guys have exhausted just about every issue, as far as I can tell.
Yes, Mr. Rodriguez?
Thanks for the input. I, I think there is, I think the problem that I have is voluntary. That's, that's the word that I'm stuck on. I think the staff could go back. If it's a cost issue, maybe we can reduce the cost. Maybe that's, we don't have to charge them so much to be in the tree preservation. If it's, if it's the type of tree, we can increase the, you know, the, maybe the diameter, only these type of trees, based on the diameter qualify that you have to pay into or something. There's, I think, when you're, I think there's other options that the staff can provide. I don't have the education to make that decision. I don't have the experience, but the staff can reach out to other cities and see what type of tree preservation ordinances they have, and, and see if it would kind of mitigate what we're trying to accomplish. We don't know that if we don't give them the opportunity.
So, if I may interject, Kira, did we do that? Did we reach out to other cities with similar ordinances that are trying to make changes?
So, we used our, our best practice knowledge. We didn't do a full study of other cities' ordinances and, and that kind of in-depth dive. Generally, cities have preservation ordinances that require preservation of three-inch caliper trees, measured at four and a half feet height, and then the same calculation as we do. The cost can vary from city to city, but $125 is in the range that, that I've observed, not that I've studied, to say.
So, so based with that information, I think there is room for them to go out and look and find out what we're trying to accomplish. 125, maybe that's too high. Maybe that's not the average, maybe it's above average. We don't know, because they haven't compared that with other cities. And, and if, if it's the cost, we have control over that.
We, we do to a certain extent, but going back to the drought situation, we could reduce it to $5, and it would still be a cost that they would lose if we had a drought situation where their watering was restricted and things like that. So, there's still going to be some element of cost if we have a catastrophic, catastrophic event, where they've planted, you know, 50 trees on their property, and then they promptly die because they can't water them, because city's under watering restrictions. So, I'm not su, I, I understand where you're coming from, you know, in doing a study, first of all, how many man-hours would that take, and what would it cost to do that? And then, you know, maybe that's something that we need answered before we can even move forward on that. But again, we've still got situations where... But again, we've still got situations where we've got folks that are going to put thousands of dollars or hundreds of thousands of dollars' worth of trees up and then potentially have a situation if they plant at the wrong time where they can't take care of them. And that's our requirement, it's kind of redundant. We require them to plant trees and then we require them not to water them.
Look.
So I'd like to, I think there's some questions in there that I'd like to suggest, okay? I'd like to suggest that there be a greater gain of understanding of what types of trees are viable here and which ones die and why, and get an understanding of that because if our tree planting list is off and people are planting trees that can't survive in our climate, then that needs to be considered in terms of the replacement as well as what trees are required to be preserved. I think that seems reasonable. Mike, look for some guidance there.
I would, I would agree, and it's, it's, there's a very good chance that this mirrors other cities. Most, if not all, cities plagiarize from ones similar to them. And so this is probably not unique, especially when some changes were made in 2019 to make some corrections of where you should measure the caliper of the tree, not at the ground where it's the thickest, but up at a higher elevation. And some of those changes, those were some pretty good corrections. But as Kira said, staff has been hearing loud and clear that, from a community perspective here and there, that we need to make some kind of change. And so this is that, that response from staff is trying to figure that change out and what, with the things, considering the things like Jeremy has said, with the state meeting, you know, right around the corner and with the potential further erosion of local control and our ability to even have a tree ordinance, who knows?
Let me, let me ask, let me ask, define the problem. Why are we here today with this question? What brought this question to the table?
Sure. So we had, the most recent concern was a redevelopment of a smaller assembly usage property where there was some misunderstanding of what a tree preservation plan consists of, how many and what trees on the property would be needing to be inventoried and possibly removed, along with what the replacement trees might look like. Included in that was some misunderstandings on the site size and area, which is a little bit removed from tree preservation, right? Another applicant came with a concern that they had gone through all this tree preservation plan but discovered that a sewer line that they're required to put in and the alignment of that sewer line would result in the needed removal of a tree that had been preserved, which was of substantial size, even at four and a half feet tall, it would be, I would suggest around a 20-inch tree, which is a lot of money. And they would have had no option but to remove that. I don't know what the resolution actually was in that situation. We also had a site in which they had a tree preservation plan, and when you have an approved tree preservation plan, you're required to stake the site and to rope off or protect those trees that are proposed for preservation. This property went, had a situation, I don't know why or how it happened, they removed the trees without the proper staking. That's not so unusual. But all of these things seem to point in the direction of whether or not tree preservation is worthy. And there are other examples that just don't come to mind right now, but it's not just three examples, there are many, and it's not uncommon to hear from developers who would prefer not to have to do the tree preservation. You know, they have to hire an arborist or someone who knows about trees and put together the plan and so on.
Mayor.
But that would still not preclude somebody from coming back and saying, hey, I want to do this, but I want to get a variance on this. I mean, we would still have the ability to do that, correct? Through ZBA, I got you. But we'd still be able to do that, okay?
Right.
Yeah. Of course, I mean, the only other caveat I'd throw in there that, I mean, if you have an ordinance and you're consistently, you know, allowing a variance over a bunch of time on a bunch of different developments, then you really have no ordinance at all. So people will know that, you know, all I have to do is come in and ask for a variance and we just kind of rubber stamp it and move it through the system, so.
And variances can be difficult to achieve. There are the prong test, the hardship, it can't be based on monetary considerations, all those considerations that go with the variance criteria.
Lance, do you want to touch on it at all from, or do you have anything to say from an economic development perspective? Not trying to force you if you don't, but if you have something to add just from that realm, it'd be, because that certainly is another impact to potential economic development.
Yeah, I think one of the situations we looked at previously was an industrial project that was required to put medians behind the building and put trees in, which did not make a lot of sense from a, you know, from a visual standpoint. And I think that particular project brought some of this to bear. One of the things I've noticed since I've been here in Granbury, I've only been here six months, but I've noticed in some of the residential developments, there's one tree required per lot in residential developments. Now, I like trees, but I'm also an economic developer, which, to me, that does not make sense in some cases, you know? It seems like some of the impetus, and this is a very simplistic way to look at it, you know, should be, it should be looked at from the standpoint of the best use of the property and the visual impetus that it has as well. So I'm not sure if that, if that has any bearing on this situation. I know it's a much more technical matter than probably what I'm making it out to be, but as Bruce mentioned earlier, I think we're on the right track in that regard. But we still need to have, we need to have, you know, people come to Granbury because of our trees. So that is important. I like the idea of looking at some other cities and seeing what they're doing.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And there may be additional language that, as part of that, that we could consider to certainly encourage the planting and the preservation where possible, but still having the ability, as Kira said in the presentation here, to negotiate when we're doing a plan development of some kind, you know, the overall package like the Kroger was. And plus, we had a 380 agreement with them as well. So all of that can be packaged and negotiated and we can say, hey, we want this, hopefully they want to do it voluntarily, but we still have the ability, when they need specific things from us, to negotiate those. And it's those existing, those existing businesses that are, has brought a lot of this to light lately, as Kira touched on and Lance, is that it's hard to imagine someone with a huge parking lot and they want to add on or rebuild a portion of it and then having to go tear up areas of their parking lot and put in trees and irrigate all of that, right? And that's where we just had to take a hard look at it, and that's what kind of, we spoke with y'all and kind of caused all of this to move forward and try to figure out a solution. And we're still trying to do that. And so whatever else direction is, that's where we'll go.
So, Kira, let me give you an example. So based on, let's say these changes do apply, and there's a lot that has several trees, and they want to build a, like a dealership, a car dealership. Most car dealerships are nothing but concrete and canopies. And they remove all trees. Would they have to replant any of those trees? Or replant any trees?
So under this proposal, tree preservation would be voluntary. However, what would be required is any landscaping requirements that are in the landscape section of the zoning ordinance.
But those would be volunteer as well, right?
No, those would be required. So those would be, as I used the example, if one tree per 50 lineal feet of street furniture, they'd have to do that. If they had other areas that were required to be planted with, say, grass, they would have to plant with grass.
And those would be required, not voluntary?
Correct.
If I could add to this, just based on what Michael said, most of those types of industrial places are probably going to be requesting some sort of tax abatement, 380 agreement anyway. And I think that was what Michael was speaking to. That's where we have a little more element of control as far as, okay, we'll work with you and maybe you can help us out by adding more trees and making it look more aesthetically pleasing. Am I correct in that?
Correct. And maybe a little more language that says, that's, still have that ability, make that clear, and that's still our desire overall is to, but we can't differentiate between existing and new, but we can at least make it known that we still think it's important, if that's council's desire. I want to put words in your mouth.
I suggest that we continue the item to the next public hearing and see what changes that the staff comes up with as far as language-wise.
Before we make?
I'm not making, I'm just suggesting.
Okay, well, I was just going to ask one more question before we actually make a motion on this. Kira, how long would it take to do a little more research on surrounding cities or cities of similar ordinances? I know that's a broad question, but I'm trying to figure out a date definite where we could bring this back and actually discuss it some more.
I would be comfortable with two or three months. That would give staff adequate time to do valid research and analysis and not only look at tree preservation ordinance, but it'd give an evaluation of some of the things that we've talked about tonight.
Okay, so two or three months, you said?
Correct.
So I would be even more comfortable with that. I hate, this is kind of a conundrum, I hate giving up something that we might lose anyway, but we still have. But I want to do it the right way, and everybody up here's had some good points, and I would, you know, like I said, I want to do it the right way. And I like the idea of researching additional cities and getting a little more information. So maybe that's the information we're looking for, it's just that, you know, comparatively to cities of similar, who have similar ordinances, and then bringing it back at a date definite so that we can discuss it again. I don't think we're on any kind of timeline for impending developments or anything at this point, are we? For these, for tree ordinance? Okay. So, I don't know.
So it's?
I'll make a motion if you?
We have to have a public hearing first.
Okay.
So, I'm going to open the public hearing on 7.12. Consider adopting ordinance number 23-09 approving the request of the city of Granbury to amend select sections of the city of Granbury zoning ordinance related to tree preservation and conservation. Amendments proposed are to section Article 8, landscape requirements, and Article 13, tree preservation requirements. Anyone want to speak? I see no one want to speak, so I will close the public hearing at this point in time. Other questions or comments?
Mayor.
Mr. Vale?
Yeah, just final comment. I mean, I think that time period's fine. You know, I know there's a lot going on. You guys have been shorthanded, because I asked you back on the 12th meeting, and she's no longer here. So I think with all the workload going on, that I think that makes sense. I'll just throw a date out for council just to think about before we make a motion, and that would be April the 4th. It's the first meeting of the month of April, so it'd be January, February, March, and to April 4th.
Yeah, 90 days.
If I just throw in the date out, just so if anybody else had another day or wanted to come in.
I think, I think that you should make that motion.
Mayor.
Do I hear a motion to delay until date certain, April the 8th?
April the 4th?
Yeah, I make a motion to delay this agenda item until April the 4th to give staff time to do some additional research as discussed.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
I hear a motion is second. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay. I hear six and oh. It's approved, six and oh. What?
Did one of you guys second this?
I did.
Trish did. Okay. Got that. All right, we're going to move to eight. Don't give me that. Do we have any, do we have anyone that has signed up for citizen comments? Matters not on the agenda. No? Do we have reason for executive session?
No, sir.
I hear no reason for the executive session, then we are going to adjourn.
Mayor, I'm sorry, I do have one more. We missed our comments and, yeah, recognizing.
Actually, we?
Yeah, I actually, I wanted to do one, thank you, if you don't mind.
Oh, I encourage.
So I just wanted to give a shout out and thank you to the people who serve on our boards. I watched the, and I do this most of the time, but I watched the P&amp;Z meeting, and the boards really do make our jobs easier because they do a lot of vetting. So I just wanted to tell everybody who serves on our boards, thank you for your service. It's greatly appreciated. That was it.
Well said and well deserved. I'm going to adjourn.